Would like to call the evening to order. Rob Hall.
Robert Thomas.
Present.
Katie Tilges.
Present.
Michael Brown.
Present.
Brown Timmons. Paul Watson.
Present.
Orin Byburn.
Present.
You have a form.
Pleasure to meet you.
Officer Diggs.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone here say a prayer? Ms. Thomas will do it.
I should, please, thank you. You bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us here this evening to help us through difficult matters, Lord, to guide us in the right direction, to place your hands upon all of us, Lord, with compassion and understanding, so that we may do things in accordance with your will, Lord. Ask that you bless all the people here in this community and give us understanding, bring us together as a community, Lord, and ask that you continue to watch over each and every one of us, including our family and friends and everyone in the community. We give praise to you as always, Lord. In your name we praise. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to make a little announcement before we get started. Anyone that would like to comment or questions or outburst on anything that's talked about tonight, if you could refrain from this until after our session, and then you would each have between three and five minutes to speak. Thank you. Can I have a motion for someone to adopt the agenda? I don't believe we can. Can I amend the agenda?
For what particular purpose?
Personnel matters, I thought. Is that person? Personnel or persons?
It's personnel.
It should be personnel, but it's a typo.
Personnel.
So there's no reason to amend if it's on the agenda to go in closed session.
Yeah, it's already on. Yeah, we're talking about hiring. Can I do that in closed session?
In closed session. If it relates to personnel matters, I think we need to go into closed session to be in conformity with the sunshine law.
Okay.
And that is on the agenda, so I don't think there's a need to amend if it's already on there.
It was just spelled wrong. Yes.
I have a graph.
I have a graph.
I make a motion to amend by interlineation.
Our second motion.
Thank you.
New business. We have created an animal committee.
So the animal committee is to deal with dangerous animals across the community. Those that are on the community is representing as an alderman, myself, Michael Brown, a citizen, Ms. Diane Schultz, and Sheriff Brinkel.
Marshal.
Excuse me, Marshal Brinkel.
That's good. Thank you. And restructuring of the police department.
Good evening, Board and citizens. Please bear with us as we don't have the most up-to-date room for computers or presentations, but we hope that we'll be able to present this still as a proposal as we restructure our PD in order to help both the budget and our police department, as well as make it a better community for the citizens of Dixon. Robert, are you able to go to the first slide?
Mike, can these be made in public?
These, this is not a publication. It's public to request copies, that's fine, but please understand because of the cost of printing, we haven't printed copies for everybody.
But if they're able to...
If you wanted to, after hand yours off, that's fine, Robert.
Okay.
But please note that there are three slides at the end that are confidential because they deal with specific pay structure.
The last, is that the last three pages?
Yeah, the last three pages, it says confidential on them.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you.
And it is information that can be requested, it's unsigned, however, it's not information that we're going to be providing because it is specific pay structure.
That's what we had discussed before, that if anyone would want a copy of this, they could be sent. And we will give it to them.
And if our TV decides to work, then you'll be able to see it on the TV. If not, I would like you to use your imaginations.
Is it on?
There we go, alright.
Well, what do you know?
Alright, so a special note again, so this, the numbers in this presentation are estimates. Again, this is not a publication. The presentation is considered an internal working document for the purpose of making a decision, and the information was based on observations, opinions, and internal accounting. Excellent. There we go. Alright, so Dixon PD staffing. Currently, there are four full-time police officers, five dispatchers, one reserve officer, and one marshal. Current authorization allows for five full-time police officers, five dispatchers, and one reserve. The PD officers work 12-hour shifts, and current staffing does not allow for any overlap. What does that mean? That means that potentially, they could be waiting up to 40 minutes for backup. Also, that means because of continuous coverage, because we need somebody on duty at all times, they're working approximately 200 or more overtime hours a month. Now, next slide, please. Overtime is paid by time and half. So let's just say, throw out a number there, $12. If an officer makes $12 an hour, then they'd have to be paid $18 in overtime. 200 hours of overtime a month costs the city approximately $3,600. Standard pay for an officer, pay period is 84 hours, and if you were to take that, 200 hours of overtime, divided by 84 hours, you would end up with 2.38 officers. Now, what's the problem with overtime? Problem with overtime is that there are greater accidents and injuries. Chronic fatigue sets in, chronic disease increases the number of sick days, tardiness, absenteeism, morale sinks, and then what do you need? More overtime. It's a perpetual cycle where you begin to lose. So, next slide, please. You say, "Well, there's five authorizations, why do we not have five officers? Why do we only have four?" That's a good question, because we have run ads in the Dixon Pilot and the Journal. It's been discontinuous, but it has been over the period of six months. Could anyone venture to guess how many applications there's been? There's been zero. Now, what does it take to qualify to be a police officer here in Dixon? Well, you've got to have a Class B certification, physically fit, you've got to pass background checks, your analysis, you've got to be older than 21. So, we're here in Missouri, and we wonder, well, how much do officers on average get paid? Next slide, please. These are the averages from 2011 and 2012. Salary for an average on chief is $82,000. Sergeant on average is $60,000. Salary for a corporal is $53,000, I'm just rounding. A patrol person about $48,000, and a dispatcher $39,000. Now, note that these salaries, the salaries and hourly, hourly, hourly pay, we're not figured from each other, but separately, because some places here in Missouri do hourly and some do salary.
And may I, I have a question. Just so we're clear on this, these are only salaries, not with our department, but throughout Missouri.
Correct, this is all throughout Missouri.
Thank you.
And if you go to the next slide, Mayor perhaps just wants your question of what it looks like here in Dixon. Salary for the chief, and then averaged, salary for sergeant is $30,000, for corporal $28,000, for patrol person $24,000, and for dispatcher $22,000. Did anybody see any difference in these numbers? A little bit of a difference. I feel like it's a very large difference. And in case you're wondering, what are other towns up? I went, I got on ind.com, looked through jobs, I just happened to pick one, there were several. Next slide, please. Patrol officer, city of Winfield, hope I said that right, I've never been there. They're offering for $33,800 a year. Alright? Now, they also offer compensation, and you can see over here, roof life insurance and other things. Anybody wonder what we get as far as compensation in Dixon? Next slide, please. There are no benefits. That slide was, is that blank on accident? Yes, please.
When you took the, this page here about Winfield, Missouri, is Winfield about the same size as Dixon?
From what I understand, I actually, I could tell it is.
It's a fourth-class city, is it?
From what I understand, it is. Now, I didn't do a lot of research into the specific cities, I just looked for specific cities, and that's the one I could get, so. But generally, if you go on ind.com, and I've had everyone to do their own research, you'll see that in the larger cities, like Columbia and St. Louis, they pay much, much more.
Well, they're a different classification, and they generate more revenue right now.
I did not, I could not find anybody who pays the same as we do. This was about the lowest that I found, searching on ind.
Did you make a comparison with St. Robert, which is also a fourth-class city, Crocker?
I could not find any current job postings on that, a couple days ago, for St. Robert, which is why I did not compare St. Robert and Winfield. Although I do know, I have a Winfield's pay schedule, which I can get to you later, if you'd like to see it. Now, you may think, a police department paid like that probably doesn't do much. Well, let's go to the next slide, I want to show you something. 2015, these were the total of all offenses, but then in 1617, you notice a difference. Well, it's missing something. Okay, so they're supposed to be, it's supposed to show that in 2015, there's two, there was 267 total offenses, 2015. In 2016, 454. In 2017, there was 406. So that's, you see a huge increase, right? Citation violations, apparently it's, Google doesn't like my picture. 2015, there was 316 total all violations. In 2016, there was 1,136. In 2017, there's 764. And what this is, what this is showing us is that someone came in and started enforcing big time. They started doing, they started enforcing the law. So you see a huge pickup, and then you'll see a little bit of a drop-off, because as people are aware, crime kind of calms down just a little bit. Alright, moving forward, next, next slide. Alright, apparently we can't, we have some other things to work on. So, moving forward, investing in the police department, what does it mean? It means better law enforcement, safer community, improved community policing, cleaner, safer parks. I mean, I can think of a host of reasons, I'm sure you all can too. If we improve the PD, we improve our lifestyle. So...
And protect our property, protect the safety of our citizens, quicker response time, et cetera. And I'll be honest, you know, if I'm in a situation where I need the police there, I want them there. I don't want to have to wait till their one patrol car is clear across the city if I'm having an emergency, just as everyone else here would feel. If we have numerous, two, three, or four patrol cars on the road, we know pretty confident that someone will be able to respond. And also, if you have a situation where you've got one officer on the road, and he hypothetically encounters a violent individual, he's got backup.
Can I say something?
Mayor needs to recognize you.
After, 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 or do you want to answer the question?
It's up to you, Mayor, you have to recognize somebody too.
Go ahead, we'll let you...
Well, I can give an instance of timing, where when I was a foster parent, I had a girl that had threatened to kill me and my grandchildren, and I was trying to contain her, so I had the kids call 911. And it took 15 minutes for the Dixon Police Station to get to my home, which I could walk uphill with a prosthetic helping two minutes.
Okay, and then that's it, until like, I'm sorry.
I think that, I think it's pretty clear, we've got to do something. You may be asking yourself, "Well, what are we proposing?" Okay, well, the next slide, it also doesn't show anything, hopefully you can see it on the computer. The next slide would show you, maybe you can just imagine or pretend with me here. Increased authorized officer, we're going to go from by, from five by one to six by one. That by one is including the marshal. So, increased authorization, that extra authorization is going to create a detective position. Chief, may I ask you, what is the benefit of a detective?
Dedicated investigative response. I mean, when we have one officer on duty, he's reactive, or she's reactive. They're mount, they're bouncing from one call to another call, reacting, and they don't have the time or effort to invest into the investigating and completion of that case.
Or to secure a crime scene.
I'm not saying that stuff gets stolen around here in Dixon, but if it did, it would be nice if there was someone that could track that stuff down.
Last year, our property crimes was $44,800.
Wow.
For 2017. $44,800. That's stolen property.
And the reason that is, I can tell you right now, because I'll be honest with you, I have found, not only through my legal career in the last 30 years, having dealt with, and my husband having represented some, these criminals are getting smarter and smarter. They know where the police are, they know how the response time is, they know, they can telephone, say, "Hey, listen, he's at the other end, you guys move in." They're very sharp, and they're very cunning and clever. So, if you don't have the power, you're not going to be able to, to effectively enforce and patrol your community and keep people safe for their property. If there's one car patrolling, someone will know where that car is at all times. If you have four or five cars out there, it's hard to keep tag on four or five. One is easy, and it gives the criminal the advantage.
Chief, is this detective position, is that something that this person would double as an officer, or is this like somebody that's on-call kind of a thing, or how does this work?
Well, I think we discussed it, that, that's an, actually, I think the sixth slot was an FY19 proposal. Our goal was to fill the fifth slot. The problem is, we have no applicants. But as FY19 comes, they will be a dedicated detective, because we'll have the fifth slot. The fifth slot's going to allow me to have two on at all time, four days a week out of the seven. If I go to six, I mean, it's going to, we would have to continue to grow to cover. Right now, we have 200 hours that are uncovered.
Maybe it just skipped me, but does, is that going, is he going, or is she going to be...
It'd be a primary detective.
Okay, thank you.
Just dedicated to detective work and not as patrol officer or backup or...
They would maintain the evidence room, be the evidence custodian slash detective.
How much crime, how much property did you save that's $44,000?
$44,800.
How much of that was recovered?
$2,800.
So $42,000 worth of people's property still missing.
I think our, our future detective, if we decide...
And what we're seeing with that is, it plays right along with the drug community. I mean, your property becomes currency in the drug market. Since methamphetamine is our big problem, they're not manufacturing it locally, they bring it in. Used to, they manufacture. Well, the price has dropped so much, so now your property, your chainsaws, your tools in your backyard, whatever it might be, is setting in a story set somewhere because it's being traded as currency for the drug market.
Do you think a detective would help with that?
Absolutely.
Well, and also too, we spoke briefly about a, like a crime watch thing too, and that would help. Again, we have, we have to be proactive in all of this, and people cannot be afraid to bring things up. I mean, you can hide behind your curtains, and you don't have, you can call anonymously, whatever you need to do, that's the only way this is going to stop.
And maybe we could, as a, as a community, get the sign and, and let them know that this is a community or a neighborhood watch program, you know, with signs.
I'm not saying people don't call. People do call, but the calls are overwhelming for one officer on duty. I mean, you, you might be, just like you stated, you know, you want the officers there now. Well, while the officers there dealing with you, somebody else is wanting that officer now as well. And you're, you're very correct, people are targeting us just as well. We were discussing a situation today that we just figured out, and the example is Casey's General Storey. Our rentals know when that truck delivers and parks right across the front windows, and they fill up their gas because they can't see them, and they leave. Well, so what I have to do, park a car there every morning that, that truck shows up. I mean, it's just, you know, people, people know what we're doing, they refuse to put up cameras. They don't want their citizens to feel they're being victimized. Their managers. We've discussed cameras with them. They have internal cameras, they would refuse to put up externally. They are very, we ran into situations with them, they're very self-insured, they eat a lot of their loss.
Obviously, they can.
Is that included into the $44,000 stolen?
Some of that is.
So as, as we can see, there's, I think we've defined the problem pretty well, right? I mean, I think we all feel like, how do we fix this? I'll tell you, increasing and including, goes from one from five by one to six by one, with that sixth position being a detective, I think that's going to go a long way, as well as creating competitive wages. Chief, what's the starting wage right now, if we were to hire somebody?
$10.50, I believe, or $11. For the officer?
Yes.
It's $11.
And if anyone knows, if anyone knows an officer, please direct them, because we haven't had any applicants in how many months? Six months. So, part of this restructure would be an immediate increase of $2 across the board, and all new officers would start at 12, and go to 13 after 90 days. As well, provide the chief a $500 cost of living adjustment, in being one of the look, yes. No, 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 please, please.
I'm just going to throw this out there, because I know there's a lot of people thinking it right now, which is, if, if we're broke, then how are we going to do this?
That's an excellent question. I'm actually so glad you asked that. Next slide, please, and I hope this one shows up, because this is the winner slide right here. It does. Yes. Good job, Robert. Alright, so our current pay period, we're paying about $10,000, this is, this is averages, $10,000, $10,133.06, right? But then when you throw overtime on that, and let's just go ahead and estimate, $3,600 for overtime. A pay period that's costing us $13,733.06.
And that's semi, semi-monthly, right?
Correct. Depending on how, some weeks, you know, some months, because it's a every-two-week pay period. Chief, how many, what was the, do you remember the overtime?
I've spent $10,100 in overtime since January 1st.
And what was the overtime cost of last pay period, do you know?
$3,800 and something.
So more than this, this is an average. Now, the proposed cost, what will it do, it'll make a change of a proposed $12,154.61 per pay period. And then when we go to 19, fiscal year 19, when we add that sixth, that detective, so basically, what will this restructure save us? We're guessing be somewhere between $13,000 and $7,000, or $7,000 and $13,000, this restructure, because we're doing so much in overtime. Again, remember in the beginning slides, we talked about it, 2.38 officers, that's how much overtime we're doing.
So we could actually hire people to live doing that overtime and still come out about the same.
Even, even once this full restructure is complete, we'll still be saving ourselves about $400.
And two additional officers.
And two additional officers, and they're all paid more, as well as a cola for the chief. And as far as further proposal, next slide, please, things that we must keep in mind and as also, which isn't on there, reserve officers. Authorize five reserve officers, and the reserve officer would come on board for Cow Days, we hope, as, depending on hiring practices go, go the way we hope they do. How many, Chief, how many officers usually we use for Cow Days?
Eight to 10.
So that would help with some of the cost, because do we not have to pay for those extra officers?
This past year, I paid Crocker PD to assist us, and we had, for a very brief time, until county got pulled away, we had three of theirs, and, but they had to leave on something more pressing.
So, what is the advantage of having a reserve police officer? Like, why, why would we want one? Or five?
Properly ran a reserve program, and that's what I want to revamp. Our current, we currently have a, one reserve officer, but he's paid part-time wages. A reserve program is a free program. So, basically, you're getting officers for nothing.
Voluntary places.
We pay their training, we pay their uniforms, but they provide us service in trade for continuing to keep their peace officer certification up to date.
So, let's say there was an incident at a school, would you be able to call reserve officers?
Yes.
Let's say there's Cow Days, would you be able to call reserve officers?
Yes.
So there's a benefit to reserve officers. Also, chief compensation, so make the 40 through 100 permanent with the next election. Call would remain in place, but at the discretion of the council. And that is to start to bring up a position who is woefully lower than any other in the state of Missouri. And with benefits review with the fiscal 19 budget. We need to take a look. What can we do? I don't know, but until we look, we'll never know. Loggers stepping level increase, health insurance and life insurance. So, to be taken a look at with, as we're doing the budget, what can we do? Oh, you're there, sorry, that's the last slide. This is, this is the last slide for the public, the rest of the slides are specific in compensation, and we don't want to show them just because we don't feel it's appropriate, but everybody's payout there.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the citizens? Yes.
Well, we had the state audit done.
2012?
Yes. The police department and the city hall are not to be in the same bill, and I think once you decide you're going to move the city hall out, which is something that we have not met as far as the proposed agreement from the state auditors, then I think that Mr. Brackle would be able to expand his, his jail cells and also increase his income on that status, which probably could constitute them getting insurance and maybe some pay raises.
Yeah, that's true. As far as even housing prisoners, you know, you, you make revenue on that.
Exactly.
John first, and then back to you, please.
Have we looked into support from, for the police department, from the state or federal, on a emergency basis possibly?
Chief, would you be able to answer that?
We've looked into a number of grants, but we are not grant compliant on a federal or state level. Due to Senate Bill 37 and some changes, Ms. Schultz brought up that there was a mandate that city hall, the police, and courts were to be separated. That did not take place. There are further mandates that are coming with a deadline in July on that. One of the main things holding us back is space. For, to be federally grant compliant, there, there's, there's laws that have changed that require a suspect's interview process to be video and audio recorded. We don't have that cave built. It must be a sterile room, there's specifications on all this. That eliminated our DUNES number, which is our federal grant number. And until we are compliant with that, then we, we put in for numerous grants, we have a few small grants right now that are pending that don't require the stipulations.
They give us these mandates, but they don't give us the, the money to lead them.
We've talked about this, this is, these are mandates that are really hurting small communities.
Unfunded mandates are difficult for small communities, and this is a burden, now, and this is a conversation... And this is a burden, now, and this is a conversation, further conversation that we will be having in the future. Yeah, I'm sorry, over here and then.
These guys are great police officers, but they need a vehicle to drive to get them around. They don't have the proper vehicles.
You're absolutely right. And that is also a conversation that we're having, and it will be addressed in the future. But you're absolutely right.
Can I speak on that?
Go ahead, chief, please.
I don't know if you want me to disclose it or not. I don't know if the citizens remember, but last year, we had a private citizen that donated money and we bought our department-issued firearms. I received a phone call last week from same private citizen. Said they've been reading about us in the paper. They're from Springfield. And they have put together $16,000 to donate towards a vehicle. So we are putting together a program to try to complete our package that was approved 20-something months ago in the budget. And hopefully, we can see that completed by the end of the summer or somewhere in there.
That's wonderful.
This is something that we're working on.
I believe we should release his name.
His name is Dale Wagner. He's from Dixon. He is a retired Green County Sheriff's Officer. Their family has been very great to us.
That's great.
Sorry, we're one right here and then Betty.
So as we take measures to fix and address the issues of the police department, which I clearly understand we need, so what happens, what suffers now in the budget to fix the other issues in the city?
So what's the?
That's all separate, right?
All this proposal is based on the overtime we've spent, it doesn't affect the budget.
Can you bring up that slide again? I don't know if you can see it from there.
In fact, Mike was saying we would save about $400, because what we're spending in overtime, what we're spending in overtime and paying, is just redirecting that overtime money toward personnel, I mean, personnel.
We're doing so much overtime that we can afford basically 2.3 paid officers.
Let you propose a healthcare for these officers too, right?
Why not till fiscal year 2019 are we taking a look at that?
Next fiscal year. That we hope.
Those are our objectives.
That will bring in police officers, because right now, that's stopping people from coming in.
Absolutely, we have nothing to offer them.
Get better coverage.
Yes.
With more people.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
It's all over the county, Paul, you're absolutely right. When you look at every facet, from street to water and sewer, to even internally, city hall and the employees, nobody has any benefits to offer.
Oh, you're sorry, okay, just close it down, sorry.
Well, you could repeat that.
And that's why it's so important to have accountability and financial management.
So again, according to our estimates, instead of paying $3,733 a pay period, we'd be paying $3,332. So roughly $400 less, once the full restructure is done. But while it takes time to get to that restructure, we should save an incredible amount of money, because it will take time to acquire that sixth detective position that's able to follow.
I just want to ask a question to the audience. Is there anybody here that would be opposed to this at all?
Never know.
We've been just screaming for more. More.
Very happy with the service and.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's been years since we've had, actually had a police force where they didn't have 200 arrests, you know, and now we're jumped up, you know, having to watch. I mean, we visibly could see the druggies walking around the street. I personally, several occasions, saw drug deals, called them in. Few days later, I saw the same two people doing another drug deal. So, yeah, if we have a better police force, better equipment, offer them, I would not work as a police officer without life insurance. No way.
Can I?
Or without medical insurance.
Can I address some of that? Some of that is a misunderstanding, okay? And I'm going to give you an example of last night. The officer last night made a stop and arrested somebody in possession of methamphetamine, two bags. We placed them on a 24-hour hold in Mary's County Jail, because it was a female, not holding males. By noon today, that person was released.
And I understand that.
Okay? Now, I'm not bashing any, anyone or the prosecutor. That person was released because they were pending lab results. We have to take that methamphetamine and send it to the crime lab. Then we refile the charge, that takes about six months to get results. That's the backlog at the lab.
Don't you have a field testing kit?
They do not accept field testing.
Well, the.
The state prosecutor.
The prosecutor will not accept your field testing kit.
Correct. City does, state does not recognize field testing. So we get a reply back, we send up our problem cause statement, we get a reply back, refile after lab results. So that is why you see some of the same people right after the.
But I'm not even talking about when you're around, I am talking about before. Diane was with me one time, getting ready to go to a dental appointment or something and saw at Delano's.
I've seen so many.
Well, I know, and I'm not talking about, I know, I understand the situation where they get arrested, they go in, you know, they get processed or whatever, and then they're back out. I understand that. That's everywhere.
And that's beyond.
What I'm talking about is if these people aren't arrested, I mean, they were so, four years ago, they were so visible on the street, it was, I got accosted on the street and nothing was done about it.
And we can't go back and answer from four years ago.
No, we can't, but what I'm saying is, is if we move forward with this, okay? I've been down to the courthouse in Waynesville, I took my niece down there and sat and listened to people talk about how you could get away with anything in Dixon, and that is no lie.
Would not surprise me, would not surprise me. And that's why Mr. Brown is working so hard to allow us to have more enforcement here to protect the citizens.
Because I guarantee, even once upon a time, once upon a time, thirty, when my parents first moved here, there was a large military, citizens that were in the military that chose to live in Dixon. They don't want to live here anymore.
Can we go with Betty? Betty, can we go in and, Betty first and then John, please? If I miss anyone else, I'm sorry.
I just want to make one statement to start this, my true feelings. It's wonderful that Mr. Wagner is donating money. It's wonderful, whatever. It is our responsibility as citizens to comply with our mayor and our council and do whatever it takes to better ourselves. It's our responsibility.
Thank you, Betty.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Marshall Brankel has done a tremendous job since he's been on there. I think we've seen a lot of improvement in any tools we can give him. I think, whatever we can do, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's give him the tools he needs.
Did anybody else have any further questions?
The only reason I asked that about if anybody was opposed is because somewhere out there in computer world, somebody's going to be saying something, the ones that are not here tonight will be saying something in.
Those are the ones that don't care about their citizens.
But you can, you can never please our people all the time.
They're not going to compute that it's for overtime.
And so you have to do what you best for your people.
Morally, 90% of those don't even live in the city.
So it is my belief that if we restructure the PD in this way, that we will save money over the long term, as well as make a better community for Dixon. So if there's no other further comments or questions, I'd like to make a motion that we increase the PD officer authorization from five by one to six by one. Across the board, $2 increase for PD personnel, provide city marshal with a $500 cola, reserve officer authorization of five, and that the Dixon city marshal pay increased to $43,000 permanently at the next election.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Ross Thomas.
Yes.
Eddie Deojus.
Yes.
Mark Round.
Yes.
Brown Timmons. Paul Watson.
Yes.
Paul Remember.
Yes.
Thank you all for your time. I apologize about the setting, we will continue to work for it. Please work with us, we appreciate all you citizens, and we appreciate the PD, and we hope that they'll be able to further help us make this a city where we love.
Anyone that would like to donate monies to help the police department out with their police cars, they would love to have it, I'm sure.
Can you make a bank, start something up at the bank?
You're talking about like, like a, like a. To donate to a.
I will, if you have something at the bank.
All right, we can do that.
I agree with you.
Well, yes, well, when they do, make sure it's legal for us to do that.
Yes, yes, please.
We know donations are like this doing.
And officer, or, Marshall, I mean, I look a lot of times online and I see a lot of things what communities do to make themselves better. And a lot of what I'm seeing is, a lot of places have these huge fundraising events for whatever, you know, I mean, maybe this is something in Avenue.
We use the word huge in our Dixon.
Huge with a Y?
So, I mean.
Damn golf things.
I've seen.
We've got a golf course.
There's, and there are probably a number of things that we could, I, as a department, cannot fundraise. It must be citizens.
Oh, I see, okay.
I mean, we would love to get out and do bake sales or car washes or this, that and the other two.
If I may interject, if there's one of you here that are Facebook member, they do have what's called GoFundMe.
I wouldn't do the GoFundMe.
Yeah, they take a portion, they take too much from you.
They really.
No, they take out 2.7%.
That's the same as it would be as a credit card payment, you ran it through any vendor. But that's, that's something that an individual can consider setting up to raise donations to present to the marshal for, toward equipment. I mean, some people can donate and say specifically, I want for this to go for equipment, I want this to specifically go, as Mr. Wagner said, to a vehicle. You can be specific or in general. But as far as what records are needed and the method and manner in which the monies are to be accepted, I'm sure there's some accountability with regard to citizens' names, address, the amount donated, and for what purpose, if any, that would be something illegally that would need to be looked into, I think, just to be on the safe side and to be in compliance with Missouri law.
And attract it. Your next.
One of the things that I know some small towns do is, they can't do it every year, but when they get enough stuff together, like maybe this city has new computers, or the police department confiscated some stuff and the owners have never been found, they hold an auction.
Surplus sale.
Yeah, big surplus sale and stuff. I know that a lot of our stuff is going to be worth a lot, because we've over, over, overused it, but that might be something to keep in mind for later on.
And that may be something that may mandate and ordinance by the city council, that may have to be something that's done by ordinance, and other cities have those ordinances in place that any surplus, and again, that's what we're looking into, seeing if there is an ordinance in effect, or if that would benefit the city.
Right now, the way the state law reads.
If you keep in mind that just because another fourth-class city does it, there can be an assumption that we can do it, because they may have ordinances in place that allows them to do that. But, I mean, any suggestions that you give, sure, you know, we can take a look into it and see if it would benefit the city as a whole. I always look forward to hearing from the public, input from the public, so we have an idea of what you all want.
What about like a golf benefit or something?
Like John has said, yeah.
Like, and all of these benefits, bake sale, fundraising events and all that, but they all have to be in conformity of law, because we are a municipality, a sitting government body in the municipal section, so we do have to be careful and research to make sure that we are within the laws of Missouri in order to do those things.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds to me like there's a workshop, maybe in order in the future, where we can bring together and form a citizens committee to really tackle this and move forward.
And there's a lot of things that we can do to do a workshop, for example, community cleanup. You know, meet at the park and we ask that the public come and maybe we can get. Countrymark to donate hot dogs or hamburgers, we can grill them in the park for everybody that participated in the cleanup. I mean, there are a number of different things that we can do to reach out to our citizens to help. I mean, this is your home.
But you know, Barbara, I mean, it's, by the time's all worth, it's up to the citizens to come together as a community to make this happen. Because it's not going to happen, you're just sitting back in our house playing games and watching.
And that's true, and talking, talk is cheap, affirmative action speaks.
I think too, and that's the thing.
You were out, and I appreciate you doing that.
That's the thing, is, for years, it's just all been, everybody against, you know, nothing was going right, and everybody knew it. You didn't hear anything good.
Right.
You know, and so maybe this, in this environment, in this environment, maybe we can get that going.
And we don't want to create that separation, I think I'm speaking on behalf of everyone on the council, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I think there has been too much division between the public and council in the past, and I think that the biggest benefit that you can offer your community is to work together.
I agree.
Exactly.
Because part of our small groups, they always run.
I was just going to mention that the current Missouri statute allows sheriffs to hold auctions. Judges decide disposition of property, and 90% of our evidence is destruction property, i.e. drugs. There has been recent changes where we can sell firearms to a licensed FFL, but that is about it.
Anyone else? Okay, yes.
I do. Hey, this morning, I saw a girl walking in the park, and I've seen her do it quite a few times. She'd make a circle and pick up something, put it in the trash dumpster. I don't know her name, but I would like to get her name and maybe she could be recognized for that, because I told her, I said, that's a neat idea. And if you realize if everybody that walked the park picked up one bottle, and maybe that's something nobody even thought about, they just walked by, this guy all got recognized.
I've been doing that for years.
Yeah, I do it all the time myself. I walk across the park along C Highway.
You are the best microphone we have. Get out there and talk to your friends, to your family and say, hey, listen, let's just start doing this.
You need to work gloves.
I know she works at the elementary, I'm going to get her name, but I said, that's great.
You guys need to wear gloves, though, when you do this, because of fentanyl.
On that note, what Mike was saying, one of our best people coming at people in Dixon is right here tonight.
Yeah, that's for sure.
I mean, this guy, he sweats out there, I'm worried about him sweeping, doesn't he?
And last I saw him.
And ask for nothing.
We ought to drop him off a bottle of water once in a while, which I tried to give him a few times.
I drop him off a coke all the time. Every time I see him, I go get him a coke.
Let's get a cooler for him, and he needs to keep him in the back of his truck.
The council needs to consider naming a street or a building or something after the donor for the, this nice donor.
We are working on a recognition of social.
Yes, we are.
I work for Wagner Police Department.
Yes.
You need to advise your people that are walking in the park kicking up things, they need to wear gloves. Because the fentanyl, drugs and stuff, it can really hurt somebody.
Needles, that's my.
You're right.
But that's what protects you from needles, so we just need to advise the public to use caution when you're picking up a stone ball that someone else has had their mouth on. Right, and I think, I think that most, most people typically know. that someone else has had their mouth on, right, and I think, I think that most, most people typically know to proceed with precautions in trash.
Maybe we could consider a, an announcement.
We can do that, Betty, next week.
Let's talk about that.
Yes, we will, we will. I'd also like to say that Connie had, from the newspaper, has been wonderful, uh, giving us some free news space. And so she is working with us to try and, and let the public know what's happening.
Care of empty water bottles, with them, if they see a needle, the, the glove, put the needle in the water box, empty water box.
Okay.
So.
Yes, Mike.
So, um, just so everyone's aware, as we go into closed sessions, we're gonna be talking about personnel. A lot of times, that involves hiring or firing or talking to employees, and so that's the reason that it's closed. It's stuff that we have to do to protect our employees. Um, so with that, please understand when I make a motion to move into closed session.
I have a question. Was that in your motion?
Where are we now? I'm sorry, this is it.
We'll let Marley second.
Six fifty-six PM, Earl Thomas.
Yes.
Uh, Betty Tillis.
Yes.
Mike Brown.
Yes.
Ron Timmons. Paul Watson. Arlen Leibner.
Yes.
Six fifty-six to the end of closed session.